I will now call the July 15th, 2019 Blue Springs City Council meeting in order. If you would, stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. We welcome you to attendance, as well as those that might watch the YouTube version later on. Next, we have the consent agenda, or the items need to be pulled and not accepted. Motion for approval.
Stand there.
Sir, second.
Second.
Thought was gonna have to wait on that for a while, huh? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Kayler.
Aye.
Levisay.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Cole Pepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a public hearing on amendments to the Unified Development Code relating to medical marijuana.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter the record: City Council information form dated July 9, 2019, with attachments of staff report, affidavit of publication in the examiner on June 22nd, 2019, UDC text amendment application, and bill number 4681 amending the Unified Development Code. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. This is a public hearing being held for amendments to various subsections and sections of the Unified Development Code to adopt additional regulations for the zoning, land use, and development standards related to medical marijuana in the city of Blue Springs. As you're aware, the city previously adopted UDC amendments for medical marijuana on May 20th of this year through ordinance 4826, and as well, again, on June 3rd of this year through ordinance 4829. These ordinances were adopted prior to the state of Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services finalizing their rules for the operation of medical marijuana throughout the state. Since that time, the DHSS has released its final rules and published those in what they're calling the emergency rules, which were formally published on July 1st. As a result of those final rules being fine-tuned, the city needs to adopt additional regulations to align our code with the state's rules, as well as to address some other issues that have come up since June when we last brought these before you. Little bit of background on our process to get here this evening. We did run these proposed amendments through the Downtown Review Board on June 27th, through the Development Advisory Commission on July 1st, and the Planning Commission on July 8th. All of those boards and commissions voted to recommend approval of these amendments to the City Council this evening. The proposed amendments do, in essence, five things, and I'll go through those one by one briefly. The first is to add a medical marijuana transportation facility as a land use in our code, to define it, and then to establish which zoning districts that facility would be allowed in. For those that aren't aware, a medical marijuana transportation facility is a separate facility from the other medical marijuana uses, such as a dispensary, or cultivation facility, or infused product manufacturing facility, or testing facility. The transportation facility's sole purpose is to transport marijuana from one location to the other. All of the other uses may have that as a component of it, such as a delivery service established as part of a dispensary. This is a standalone use that would provide that kind of almost courier service in between the different medical marijuana uses. And as such, the state included that in their final rules, and so we need to include that in our code, define it, and then, again, identify which zoning districts it would be appropriate in. Staff has proposed to allow the transportation facilities by right in the regional commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial zoning districts, which are similar to the other medical marijuana facilities. The cultivation facilities, the more industrial ones, infused products, manufacturing, were allowed in light industrial, heavy industrial. Staff felt that the transportation facility, given the transportation component of it, would also be appropriate along the major arterial streets and highways throughout the city, which those tend to include regional commercial zoning or zone property, so that's why staff has proposed to include that. The next thing we did was to amend the medical marijuana testing facilities in the zoning district in which those are allowed in. At the May 20th council meeting, an amendment was made on the floor to allow those in the regional commercial zone, in addition to what staff proposed of light industrial and heavy industrial. In further researching that, looking at it, staff felt that maybe that didn't quite offer up enough properties in the city for that testing facility use, and so staff is proposing to allow that in the general business zone. Since that time, staff has done a lot of research on what these facilities look like, how they operate, their potential external impacts on adjacent properties, and staff is comfortable recommending including that in the general business zone, which are along the major arterials and commercial areas throughout the city. The third set of amendments is to adopt special use standards for the medical marijuana transportation facilities. Those are where we provide the required buffers to churches, schools, and daycares, hours of operation, security requirements, ventilation requirements, architectural requirements, things of that nature. Staff is proposing the same standards as been adopted for the dispensaries and the cultivation facilities, in the infused products manufacturing facilities for these new transportation facilities, so it would maintain the 1,000-foot buffer, the same hours of operation between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., the same ventilation, site plan requirements. All of the requirements that were previously adopted for the other uses, except for the testing facility, which had the reduced buffer, would be proposed for the transportation facilities. In addition, we are making a minor amendment to section 405050A38, which was medical marijuana uses in general. We realized that that section, when we previously adopted, didn't quite do what we were intending it to do, because we left out a word. It was meant to be a catch-all for all of the different uses that are associated with medical marijuana that we may not have thought of, and we had originally said medical marijuana uses, including all of the ones that we'd adopted, and in this one, we're just saying not including those. So, we don't want to have conflicting provisions, so this is more of just a cleanup amendment. In addition, we are adopting special use standards for medical marijuana warehouses. This was in addition to the final rules proposed by the state, which allows all of the medical marijuana facilities to have a separate warehouse location that supplies the product to that end location, or helps store it. And so, those were kind of snuck into the final rules. They weren't really identified as one of the five major types of facilities, and so we need to accommodate those as well. And in essence, medical marijuana warehouse can be in any zoning district where we allow a warehouse today, but it still has to comply with all the buffering and hours of operation and things of that nature for that warehouse. So not every warehouse in the city could accommodate this, not every zoning district can accommodate this, but in essence, it's going to be allowed where other warehouses are going to be allowed, but they still have to meet the buffer requirements and all the other special use standards. The fourth amendment is to adopt a process through which relief, modifications, or alternatives to the strict rules within the special use standards of the UDC may be approved. Staff brought before the Planning Commission and City Council a number of months ago UDC amendments which remove references to use variances in the code, and that was the provision, in essence, that's how the city had previously allowed for people to request relief from special use standards. And so, because we took that out, we still believe we need to allow somebody that due process afforded legally to request an appeal, or an amendment, or some sort of variance, if you will, but not really variance, but some sort of alternative compliance to a special use standard. And so, staff is proposing, due to the unique nature of these, that any of that, as would be applied to any special use standard, not just medical marijuana, would go through the conditional use permit process that's approved or reviewed by Planning Commission and can be appealed to City Council, rather than taking it just to the Board of Adjustment. We believe that a lot of the special use standards involve site provisions, provisions for landscaping, provisions for ensuring compatibility with adjacent land uses, and things of that nature. A lot of those will have to go through a site plan review anyway, through staff or the Planning Commission, and we felt that doing it through a conditional use permit and Planning Commission was a better route to take them through than to go through the Board of Adjustment, and then potentially, again, through Planning Commission and City Council for separate applications. So, that is before you, and that would apply to all of the different special use standards in the code, not just those related to medical marijuana. The final set of amendments relate to medical marijuana within the Downtown Development Code. Proposed amendments would add medical marijuana testing facility as a permitted use within the Downtown Development Code in the commercial zone, or commercial transect areas. It would eliminate the buffer requirements, basically stating that the medical marijuana dispensary and testing facility uses would be exempt from the buffer requirements as listed elsewhere in the UDC to existing elementary schools, secondary schools, daycares, and churches. And it would also eliminate the prohibition that we have under the special use standards that state that medical marijuana uses can't be located within the same building as a residential unit. The Downtown Development Code has unique zoning classifications which allow for mixed-use buildings and live-work units, in which they're specifically designed to accommodate commercial office within residential, and residential within the same building. And so, the request is to remove that prohibition just for the Downtown Code, so that those two medical marijuana uses could be within either a mixed-use building or a live-work unit. That summarizes all of the amendments before you this evening. Staff recommends approval of these UDC amendments based upon the criteria listed in section 403020 of the UDC for text amendments to the Unified Development Code by finding that the proposed amendments are in accordance with the adopted plans and policies of the city, that the change is consistent with the objectives of the Unified Development Code to regulate development within the city, and that the change is necessary due to changed social and economic conditions with the new presence of medical marijuana within the entire state of Missouri, and how that affects Blue Springs. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council of Mike? Councilman Kayler.
Mr. Mallon. In reference to in the same building that you're trying to do away with, how does the state, refresh my memory, how the state states that? If you can have it in the same residential?
The state doesn't address it.
Doesn't address it?
Right, and so then the cities are left to be able to address that if they so choose.
And right now, Blue Springs has, where you can have that in the same room, correct?
Right.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're clear, because my understanding is that even though you can have it in the same building, it still has to be a secure area. So if it's a building where there's stairwell between the residential and the retail on the lower level, that cannot happen. It's still got to be secure and meet all those requirements.
Yeah, they would have to be viewed under the building code as two separate entities, and so they couldn't share a common entrance that leads to both. They would have to be separated in terms of fire rating and building separation. So, they could share a primary entrance, and then where you go upstairs to one and downstairs to the other, but those individual spaces would have to be secure per all of the building code requirements.
On your comment you just made about common entrance, wouldn't that mean that there would be two doors inside the entrance door? In other words, you couldn't just come in and go one way without a door and a lock?
That's correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
We're gonna go to the public. You know, one in the audience like to speak in support of? All right. Cindy, you're up. Then you can come up next, and you can come and give your name to our reporter. Be sworn in.
Oh, sorry. Cindy Miller. My address is 401 Southwest 18th Street, Blue Springs, Missouri, 64015. Okay.
Okay, you're up.
Okay, I kind of feel a little nervous tonight, I don't know why.
No, you know all of us.
So, anyway, thank you for letting me speak to you guys tonight, I really appreciate it. I know, first of all, I want to start by saying that we're here. I, as president of Downtown Alive, and I've got some of our board members with me, we're not here tonight really as proponents of marijuana or of medical marijuana industry, but more so proponents of what's good for our downtown district. We're trying to follow our mission statement, which is to strengthen the economic base of our district, and that's primarily why we're here, trying to get these amendments to the ordinance. So, that being said, we all know the citizens of Blue Springs passed the legalization of marijuana by 73%, so there's clearly a desire for those types of businesses. And what we've kind of done some research based on facts from other 33 states offering medical marijuana, it's something that we can capitalize on the industry, it could have a definite positive impact on existing businesses located in the downtown district. Statistics show that for every dollar spent by medical marijuana customers, an additional $3 is realized an economic impact, most of it at the local level, and that could be huge for our district. Our Downtown Alive Board has had many discussions, and we voted to advocate for revised ordinance pertaining to medical marijuana, as you all know. We're in favor of a zero buffer from churches, schools, and daycare, and we're also in favor of the ability for medical marijuana dispensary and testing facility uses to be located within a building, like Mr. Mallon talked about, that contains a residence in the mixed-use and live-work spaces. We're in favor of these in an effort to compete for these medical marijuana businesses. Our downtown district is also already faced with many challenges, such as a reduced traffic count. We have not as much traffic on our downtown district as, for example, 40 Highway, the 7th Highway corridor, Adams Dairy corridor. That's definitely a reduced traffic count for us. So by having a reduced buffer, this will put us at more of an equal opportunity or a level playing field to the other corridors within the city, is what we believe. If the ordinance remains at the 1,000-foot buffer, when we measured heading east from the church located at 15th and Main, which I know is not an active church today, but it could be at any time, that 1,000-foot buffer puts us with the first possible location between 10th and 11th Street. So the main block of downtown would not be able to have a medical marijuana facility. Coming the other direction, heading on west on Main Street, there's a church at 8th Street, so the same distance, it would be approximately the same block between 10th and 11th Street. Therefore, the available space on Main Street, which is our main thoroughfare of the downtown district, becomes minimal. Leaving the buffer at 1,000 feet puts us at a definite disadvantage when we're only left with one block and a couple of those spaces are filled with parking lots. So that definitely is something that's not available for a dispensary or a testing facility. In comparison, there's approximately two miles between churches and daycares along 7th Highway. Two miles is equal to 10,560 feet. If you're talking both sides of 7th Highway, that's 21,000 feet or more. So that's definitely a greater number of possibilities for dispensaries or testing facilities in that corridor, not an equal playing field for our downtown district. Another issue is safety. Safety is always a concern in the medical marijuana industry, and, you know, we have the advantage of having the public safety building in our downtown district, and what safer place could there be for a medical marijuana facility than in the downtown district? So we believe that could be an amenity that the medical marijuana industry might be seeking, and most likely be interested in locating near our police department. Those are just a few of the reasons that we're really advocating for this reduced buffer. We just are trying to make our district as competitive as we can be and equalize the playing field. So, that's really it for my comments tonight. As always, we appreciate the opportunity to be able to talk to you. I'd be happy to answer any questions, as long as they're not hard.
Councilmember Kayler.
Would you rather have multiple choice, or essay?
Not an essay.
Question?
Yes, sir.
So, downtown corridor, do you have the same as the rest of Blue Springs with alcohol buffers with church, and is that the same too?
Well, that's a different subject, and one that we hopefully at some point would like to have reduced buffers there, too.
Okay, and so, with downtown being in favor of no buffer, and not in favor of the 1,000 feet, have you thought about anything in between, or is it just?
We have. It's not zero or 1,000. We've talked about, you know, we would, some other cities have proposed a 300-foot buffer. We would, that would make it at least, we've measured those blocks, our blocks are about a little over 300 feet long. So the distance from 12th Street to 11th Street is 327 feet in that block. So a 300-foot buffer would work, but again, in thinking back in the history of the downtown district, there was a church located in, for a number of years, in the lower level of what is now Inkling's Bookstore, the coffee shop, lower level, had a church in that space. So that would cause an issue if a church came into a space like that again, if that makes sense. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and then my other question would tie with Mr. Mallon, but help me understand here. If there's not a church there now, and these go into effect, does the buffers go into problems when the church comes in later?
Yes and no. Let me explain. If there, when the initial round of applications is made after the beginning of August this year, if there's a then-existing church, then it's kind of frozen in time. If there's not a church there by the, at the time the applicant applies to the state or a school or daycare, and then a license is granted for that, and a church comes in afterwards, then that medical marijuana facility is allowed to remain as long as they maintain their state licensing and city business licensing. If they go away for any reason, and the church remains, and then somebody else wants to go back into that space, that would not be allowed. In addition, if, not just say this round, but, you know, say these initial 192 facilities get awarded applications, and one of those goes out of business, and thereby somebody else can apply, because, you know, there's room at the end, if you will, and somebody applies for a space that there wasn't a church there at one point, but there is now, then they would be subject to wherever it is at the time they apply. So, we keep thinking about this initial application being in August of this year, but there could be subsequent applications in the future if some of the ones that do get licenses go out of business over time, and so it could impact it if a church moves into that site later, yeah.
Okay, so like, you were saying that with the church down below in the corridor that was once there, basically it's not there anymore, that would not have an effect at all. If everything passed, and then a church wanted to go back into that, it still wouldn't be an issue, is that correct?
It would not be an issue after the licenses get awarded initially, and this first go around after the August applications. It could be in the future, but...
Right, but it could be in the future, right? If there was a church that came in?
If somebody lost their license.
Or if someone applied for a new license.
Correct.
Could go out of business, or actually the state does even allow for somebody who gets awarded a license, this is getting kind of technical, but the state says you can get awarded a license for a given location, and then you can petition the state to move your license to a different location within the same city, or the same congressional district, as long as it doesn't, you know, mess with the numbers or anything. You can move it if you give them a reason, and so then you would be subject to the 1,000-foot of that new location.
But, can I ask a question? Is that also presuming that there's never going to be someone who comes in and tries to get a new license?
Well, there could be in the future, but the state is, you know, kind of really emphasizing that these are going to be the first round of applications. Now, for the dispensaries, it's likely going to be all 24 within the congressional districts are going to be applied for right off the bat, and so that allotment will be filled up. There may not be the full allotment of the other cultivation facilities and testing facilities and things of that nature right from the beginning. Those may be market-based, and, you know, people simply don't know how many of those we need yet. So, there could be some additional applications that come in after this first set in August.
Mayor, may I comment to her?
Go ahead.
My turn?
Your turn.
First of all, you did a great job for being nervous. I thought that was wonderful. The old phrase you had me from Hello, when your first statement about this is good for the betterment of downtown and economic revival and all that, I would have to say I've come full circle on this. I agree with you, but I also would add to your statements, I think this is good for downtown and Blue Springs. What's good for downtown is also good for the rest of the community. I think you guys have thought about this very well, and I appreciate your comments. This whole process has led me in a different circle.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, because it has nothing to do with the date this ordinance goes into effect. It has to do with the date of the church coming in, or the date of the license for the marijuana facility, and what takes precedence over the other. So, and it makes a big difference.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, you certainly made some compelling points.
Thank you very much for letting me speak, I appreciate it.
We appreciate it, and thank you for coming to testify.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next person up.
I think I'm okay, sir. I think she answered a lot of the questions I was inquiring about.
Okay, so you don't need to come, you don't need to come speak in favor, she made your case.
I just wanted to listen.
Okay, good. Well, there's anyone else? If there's no one else in the audience like to speak in favor, is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak in opposition, too? Opposition, too? For the public hearing. Who would like to introduce 4681?
I will introduce, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number 4681, an ordinance amending various sections and subsections of Title IV, chapters 401 through 411, Unified Development Code of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to adopt additional regulations for the zoning, land use, and development standards related to medical marijuana facilities and uses.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye, same sign.
Second reading of bill number 4681, an ordinance amending various sections and subsections of Title IV, chapters 401 through 411, Unified Development Code of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to adopt additional regulations for the zoning, land use, and development standards related to medical marijuana uses and facilities.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and given the appropriate ordinance number.
Sir, second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
No.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried with a vote of four to one, five to one, excuse me.
Okay, next, I will accept a motion to continue the public hearing on fiscal 2019 through 2020, through 2101, through to 2022. So, it will be continued till the August 5th.
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion, there's a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Next, we'll have introduction reading of bill 4682.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number 4682, an ordinance accepting the conveyance of a permanent water line easement from Donna J. Phillips for water main relocation at 308 Southwest 21st Street.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Sir, second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign.
Second reading of bill number 4682, an ordinance accepting the conveyance of a permanent water line easement from Donna J. Phillips for water main relocation at 308 Southwest 21st Street.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Sir, second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levisay?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, I'll have introduction reading of bill 4683.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number 4683, an ordinance approving the conveyance of a permanent utility easement from the South Side Church of Christ of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please. I mean, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign.
Second reading of bill number 4683, an ordinance approving the conveyance of a permanent utility easement from the South Side Church of Christ of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erickson.
Aye.
Cole Pepper.
Aye.
Kayla.
Aye.
Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
That brings us to mayoral announcements. Most of you probably already know that the person that this building is named in honor of, higher L. Brown, passed away. And I have some specifics about his services. And his services will be held on Thursday, July 18th, at the First Christian Church in Blue Springs, 701 Northwest 15th Street, with a nine, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 visitation, and a 10:00 AM service in tournament will be at the Blue Springs Cemetery. Chief Brown served as chief from 1965 to 2001. A number of us up here knew him personally, and he lost his wife, Jolene, three years ago. Matter of fact, last April, Jolene passed away, and they didn't have any children. So, if you've noticed, the flags are at half-staff here at the Public Safety Building in honor of Chief Brown. Anyone else have any comments before I move on to thoughts to ponder? Some of you probably know I received my degree from Rockhurst University. And at Rockhurst University, it was not optional, nor was it elective. You had to take philosophy. So, I got a chance to know the Greek philosophers very well, Socrates, Plato, Aristotle, to name three. So, tonight is going to come from Socrates, and I quote, "The only true wisdom is in knowing you know nothing," end quote. Next, we're going to have, we have a special visitor here tonight from the great city of Grandview, Missouri. We have the city clerk, Becky Shimmel. Did I pronounce that right? Shimmel, Becky?
It is Shimmel. It is Shimmel.
I had it right. There you go. She's here for a special presentation to our illustrious city clerk, Cheryl.
Wow.
Yes.
Are you going to stay up?
You're going to go down there with her?
I'm sure you can.
Okay.
We'd like to picture with her.
Okay. Who's going to take it?
I am.
Oh, pardon me.
We'll take pictures after.
We're going to go down here and take a picture with her once she gets done doing her presentation.
Well, good evening, Mayor Ross and city council members. I'm Becky Shimmel. I am the city clerk for Grandview, and I'm here tonight to recognize your city clerk, Cheryl Morgan, for, on behalf of the Public Relations Committee of our City Clerk State Association. She wanted me to note that even though you have previously honored her with a proclamation, I'm here on behalf of the State Association and our Public Relations Committee. So, I'm officially doing that for them and for her. So, you may have to hear some, you know, duplicate information, but it's all very important.
It's all good. About Cheryl, it's all good.
It's all very important.
It is all good.
So, okay, well, Cheryl was hired as assistant city clerk with the city of Blue Springs from 2007 to 2011, and then she became a legal assistant for the city from 2013 to 2014. Her promotion to city clerk began in 2014. Cheryl began her city clerk's educational journey by joining the Missouri City Clerks and Finance Officers Association and the Western Division in 2007. After attending many dedicated hours of educational sessions over the next several years, she earned her Missouri Registered City Clerk certification from the State Association in 2017. Cheryl just recently earned her Missouri Registered City Clerk Continuing Certification from the State Association and the Certified Municipal Clerk Certification from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Knowing the importance of promoting the general welfare of her city's governmental operations, Cheryl will continue to strive toward performing services that best meet the interests and needs of the public as efficiently and effectively as possible, ever-improving administrative techniques used in the operation of municipal governments while implementing all she has learned through the two city clerks associations over the years. Her many accomplishments here include document imaging project for council documents, electronic record storage for quick access, resulting in reduced research and response times for sunshine law requests, which saves hours weekly, records management, retention, and destruction policy, established records center at the city hall to house inactive records for retention. She assisted former city attorney in creating contract processing policy to ensure compliance with federal and state statutes. She created contract database, a contract database to track all contract details and run reports monthly to inform departments of upcoming renewals requiring e-verify documents, insurance, or prevailing wage information for the renewal term to track compliance with state statutes. She developed an access database for board and commissions to track volunteers for nearly 200 board seats by identifying vacancies and running reports for expiring terms and rosters. She created a new election packet for council seats containing detailed information about the city charter and statutory requirements for serving. Cheryl has been called persnickety and a host of other names as she is teased.
Who told her that?
As she is teased about her dedication to transparency, but she doesn't mind. That's what city clerks do. Cheryl is one of the founders and serves as the chair of the Eastern Metro Municipal Challenge. This challenge allows employees to participate in sporting events and network with Blue Springs employees, as well as employees from other municipalities. Next year will be the 10th year of the EMMC, which began with two cities and has now grown to 11 participating municipalities and 20 events annually. The clerk boards that she is on are also numerous. Charter city representative on the Secretary of State's Local Records Board from 2018 to current. She's the state director from 2017 to current and serves on the nominating, budget, and oversight committees for our state association. She was appointed as the first state division director liaison to the CCFOA Executive Board in 2019. She's our Western Division Treasurer since 2017, and she's on the Western Division Public Relations Education Committee, among others. Your city clerk, Cheryl Morgan, has worked very hard to attain the Certified Municipal Clerk certification. It's a combination of education and experience, and Cheryl is to be commended for her perseverance in achieving this goal. Additionally, you, as elected officials, are to be commended for your continued support of Cheryl as she works toward this certification. It clearly demonstrates that you recognize that the knowledge she receives at the state, local, and international educational sessions is of great benefit to you, to other city staff, and to your citizens. I'd like to congratulate Cheryl for her hard-earned achievement of her Certified Municipal Clerk certification, and as she continues her commitment to lifelong learning in her career as city clerk. Congratulations. So, she has a plaque from the state, and then this is just a little token. This is the token. Yeah, that's a good, that's a better one.
Yes. Need to come together a little more. Okay.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
In favor, aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign, we're adjourned.[1697.26]